Speak loudly, okay? Take your time and just go slowly. Make sure you speak nicely slowly so we can hear everything. And I will do my best if it cuts out to let you know that it's cut out. So I want to make sure we hear everything. I want everyone who does speak to stay on the point as to the issues that are before the zoning board of appeals and people seeking a variance of one of the zoning regulations. So if you're too far off the point, I reserve my right as chairman to receive your comments at any time. Anyone who's interested, you can remain on the call because we will take, depending on how long this takes, we may take a short break or we may go directly into reconvening our working session and vote on each matter that went forward today. When we do vote, there's five voting members of the zoning board of appeals. In order for your application requesting a variance to be granted, you need at least four of us to vote in favor. You need a super majority, not a simple majority. A three to two vote in favor means that your application has been denied. If you cannot hang around on this call, you can contact the zoning office tomorrow morning or later to find out what was decided. If an application for a waiver is granted, it will not be valid until the notice is recorded, the granting is recorded on land records for the town of Fairfield. Therefore, you must send or bring a check to the town made out to the town of Fairfield amount of $60 and bring it to zoning office or send it to zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting, which will allow for proper recording of the notice of filing. Any waiver involved in construction, whether it's new dwelling addition alteration, will require an Aspil prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of Matters on our docket, first, I've already stated this, but for the record as to the public hearing, I need to state it again. Continued docket number 14, 195 Old South Road slash 86 Pequot Avenue. That application has been withdrawn. Number 15 on the continued docket, 146 Chelsea Street. That application has been withdrawn. General docket number one, 831 Black Rock Turnpike, map 79, parcel 322. Petition of Hanford Avenue Associates for a variance of the zoning regulation section 1.1 to reduce lot size for a four family dwelling from 12,500 square feet currently 7,900 square feet, proposing 7,900 square feet. Kind of enforcement, excuse me, permission to convert a nonconforming first floor commercial space into two additional dwelling units premises C-zone. I believe Mr. Mills is presenting that or is there another applicant, agent group?
You there, Robert?
I said Robert before. Is it the one that just said Robert?
That's what I thought.
Is Robert Mills the fourth on the? Map line, read the next one. We're going to pass this. See it? Maybe it's a connection. Maybe that is him. But we're going to pass right now on 831 Black Rock Turnpike. When he does, we will take it in the next available spot soon as he does come on.
Okay.
Number two, 58 Judge Street, map 77, parcel 566. Petition of Cheryl E. Acker-Wulchik for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 20%, proposing 21.5%. Permission to remove and rebuild an existing screen porch premises A-zone. And I believe the owner is presenting the application.
Yes, this is Eric Eichen and my wife Cheryl is sitting here with me. I'm sorry, my camera does not appear to be working properly, so I apologize for not having that here. As you just stated, we are planning to remove the existing six by 10 porch on the rear of the house and we'll put it on the new 10 by 14 porch. It's going to be very similar to what's on there, just a little bit bigger. The variance is based on maximum building size lot coverage. The existing structure is at 20% of the lot. With this addition, we're going to 21 and a half percent, which is 80 square feet additional lot coverage. We are in a pre-existing nonconforming lot. It's a undersized lot of 6,000 square feet versus the 9,300 and 7,500 square feet required for current existing zoning rules. We've already approached our neighbors and when they did sign a petition, which you should have, as well as I believe there was letters that went out to roughly 32 people or 32 other lots in the area. I also would just want to point out our neighbors on both sides do already appear to have a variance for the same thing that we're asking for. Their lots, their houses are a little bit bigger, their structures.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eichen. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Eichen? Saying shakes the head, no. Okay. No questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone in opposition? All right. Thank you, Mr. Eichen. We'll be taking this matter up later when we're back in our working session. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Have a nice day.
Did Robert Mills come back?
Hello, could you hear us?
Yes, you're calling in on the phone?
Yeah, we're having a problem with the microphone on the computer, but yeah, he's back now, so could you hear us okay?
Yes, you might just have to, I would suggest you just speak up a little bit just to make sure. I'm turning up my volume. Maybe that was me, but go ahead, sir. Let me hear you again.
Hello, this is Robert.
Great, that's perfect. All right, this is on, just one second. It's on 831 Black Rock Turnpike. Go ahead, sir. Why don't you tell us about what you want to do?
What we would like to do is take the existing first floor space, which was an old commercial, nonconforming floor space, and convert it into two new dwelling apartments. We have done the site survey for the property. We've established that we have enough parking to establish parking for four apartments. And we would like to renovate the complete interior of the building. And the footprint of the outside of the building is not going to change. That's going to remain the same. So we're not increasing the building size at all. We're only eliminating the old unused commercial space that is located on the first floor.
Anything else, sir?
No, I don't believe so. We do intend to renovate the exterior of the building, new siding, windows, roof, et cetera, and make it more appealing to the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, let's see if the board has any questions. The board have any questions for Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jane.
Hi. How many square feet will each of the new apartments be?
Roughly around 900.
And are these going to be affordable housing designated apartments?
No.
So these are all market rate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Any other questions from the board? I'll shake the head. Is anyone, anyone that speaks in favor of this? And is there anyone in opposition? All right, that closes the hearing on number one, 831 Black Rock Turnpike. Thank you, sir. I will be taking this up later in our hearing. Next item is number three, 66 Smith Street, map 182, parcel 226. Petition of Dexter and Nicole Mateo for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce sum of two sideline setbacks from 25 feet currently 22.8 feet, proposing 22.8 feet and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage and total floor area ratio from 20% and 40% currently 20.6% and 41.3% proposing 23.3% and 46.5%. Permission to construct a rear two-story and second floor addition premises A-zone. And I think the owner is presenting this as well. Miss Nicole Mateo, go ahead.
Hi, yes. Hi, thank you everybody for your time. We appreciate it. So as mentioned, we are asking for a variance to add a small addition over the back existing family room of our home and as well as a small addition of a laundry room on the first floor. Our existing hardship is that we are currently in a nonconforming lot. We also, just on a personal note, appreciate the support. We have, you know, put down roots in the neighborhood. Our family has grown since we moved in here and we'd really like to stay put and this will allow us to do so with our growing family. Something else to note is that some other homes on the street have also come for a variance for the same reason as ours and those have been approved. We, I dropped off yesterday our petition to the neighbors. Everyone on both sides of the street, four houses up and down the block has signed in support except for one individual, I believe, start the map here, 48 Smith. I wasn't able to get in touch with him. I think he might have been out of town or something. But we have support from all the neighbors and we'd really appreciate your support and approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mateo. Does the board have any questions for the Mateos?
Sorry, one question, one question. Is this, are you lifting, is this house within the FEMA flood zone? I mean, do you have to?
It is, yes.
Are you lifting the house at the same time?
No, we are not. It's a small enough addition where we wouldn't be required to and we would still be within compliance.
Okay. Do you have to fill in the basement?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or opposed to this application? Okay, that closes the hearing on 66 Smith Street. Thank you, Ms. Mateo. We'll be taking this up later on in the hearing.
Thank you.
Next matter, number four, 401 Springer Road. That has been continued. Number five, 462 Lally Boulevard, map 138, parcel 235. Petition of Hell's Peak Road LLC for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 20% currently 19.9% proposing 20.5%. Permission to extend the mechanical platform so as to add a standalone generator premises A-zone. I think Attorney Ambrose is presenting this. Go ahead, Attorney Ambrose. We can't hear you, Peter. Still can't hear you.
Hold on.
You're muted, Peter.
Can you hear Peter now? Peter now? Peter now? Peter now? Peter now?
Yeah, but.
Can you hear Peter? His camera's closed. Open his camera.
Speaker up on his computer.
The speaker is up?
Nope, his volume of the computer.
No, no, this is off.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
The volume on the actual computer, Doc.
It is up.
Go ahead, Peter.
Hung up on the phone call.
You don't have to dial in again. We hear you. We're going to get the same feedback again, guys.
Do your attendee ID number.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
I apologize for the technical issue.
Hold on a minute, Peter. Hold on. You have, I think, both your computer and your, and the dial-in. You need just one.
How about now?
Much better.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I have to thank my secretary after we were through. So my name is Peter Ambrose. I'm a lawyer in Fairfield and I represent Hell's Peak Road LLC. And the variance is being sought. It's a waiver of section 5.2.5 to increase the maximum allowable building coverage as a percentage of lot area allowed from the existing 19.95% allowable is 20% to 20.5%. My clients wish to build a raised platform for a generator next to the existing air conditioning units at one foot higher than the AC unit's platform. The existing top of the AC deck is at 11 feet elevation. The property is in a flood zone. Thus, the top of the planned generator will be 12 feet elevation. The platform will be at the westerly corner of the building as shown on the survey at the right rear hand corner adjacent to the AC unit. Its approximate dimensions will be 72 inches in length and 52 inches wide and 48.5 inches high. It will not extend beyond the corner of the house lengthwise or beyond the AC deck widthwise. And the generator is approximately 48 inches high by 25.5 inches wide. The hardship involved is the property is in a flood zone. And as a matter of fact, the proposed generator cannot be put on grade level. It must be elevated to 12 feet above the sea level. Said elevation of the generator creates a problem because it causes an increase in coverage in excess of the allowable minimum building lot coverage by 0.5%. A very small amount. The maximum allowed is 20%. However, the existing conditions are 19.95% and the proposed conditions would be a little over 20% coverage. Furthermore, stacking the generator over the existing AC unit would create a clearance issue with the windows and therefore that's not possible. Therefore, I submit again that the hardship involved is the fact that the property is in a flood zone and it does require raising the platform to an acceptable level. So it's a minimum request I submit. And there are other members in our general area that have also applied for this hardship and for this waiver in the flood zone area. I have submitted a list of neighbors and all of the adjacent neighbors have signed off and are in support of this application. Also, obviously, notices have been sent out to approximately 30 people in the neighborhood voicing our concern to seek this waiver. I have submitted a survey prepared by Neil James and it's before you. And I'm available for any questions you may have. I can't hear. I can't hear what you're saying. Dawn, I can't hear.
Dawn?
I apologize.
I had myself on mute, Peter. It was my fault. Don't worry.
No.
Not Dawn's fault, my fault.
Who?
The board have any questions for Attorney Ambrose? Okay, no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this matter? It's 462 Lally Boulevard. Hearing none will close the hearing. Sorry about that, Peter. I had myself on mute. I know, I scared you.
Have a lovely day.
All right, the next matter, number six, 75 Old South Road, map 241, parcel 156A is an apple. Petition of Haley and Christopher Milligan for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage from 15% currently 16.1% proposing 15.9%. Permission to construct a new single family two and a half story dwelling with front porch premises R3 zone. I think Mr. White is presenting this, I believe?
That's correct.
Go ahead, Mr. White.
Okay, so, hi, my name's Tanner White. I'm the architect. I'm representing Christopher and Haley Milligan, who are the homeowners at this property. They currently live in 75 Old South. And actually, we had a previous application that got approved for a lot variance on that existing house and we were planning to build it. The existing lot, the previous lot coverage that was approved was 16.5% for the building lot coverage. The existing lot coverage right now as it stands is 16.1. So we got that variance for 0.4%, I think, a few months ago. After we went through the bidding process and sort of started opening up walls and investigating further, it actually made sense to tear the house down and rebuild something entirely new, but pretty much the exact same house. So you'll see, let me see if I can share my screen here. So you'll, this is saying I have to get out and come back in in order to share my screen. So I'll just, I'll keep talking for now, but basically, the shape of the house, the design of the house, because this is a historical property, is all, I mean, pretty much the same. It's just new construction. So the variance that we're asking for today is actually less than our previous application, but since it's a new house, we obviously have to go through this process. So the coverage that we're asking for is 15.9%, which is 41 15 square feet. Again, the house is very, 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 very similar in footprint, shape, size, aesthetics, but it is 0.9% over the allowable lot coverage. Our hardship for this, which is the same as it was on the previous application, was that we have an access strip of about roughly 3,000 square feet that does not get to get counted towards our allowable building lot coverage. So had we had that, you know, lot coverage or had we had that square footage of lot from the access strip added to our lot, we would have not needed a variance. But that basically pushes us over the allowed once you take out that 3,000 square feet for the access strip. All other, all other variance, I mean, there's no other variances that we're asking for, just lot coverage. We're complying with height, building square footage. So in summation, you know, where it's, it's pretty much the same exact house, same exact floor plan, we're just asking for a 1.1% coverage over the allowable, but also, I'm sorry, a 0.9% coverage over the allowable. However, we are reducing the existing lot coverage of the existing house and substantially reducing the previously approved variance lot coverage as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. White. The board have any questions for Mr. White? Yes, Jane?
Hi, did you have to run this past Historic?
We are scheduled for Historic next Thursday.
And what, I'm just curious, what does Historic say about tearing down a historic house?
Well, the house was actually not historic. It was built in the late 90s.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a historic house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's it. I was just curious if they're going to, okay, thank you.
And any other questions? All right, hearing, any other questions? Someone here in the wishes to speak in favor or opposed to this particular application? Okay. No, no one there? And we're going to close number six, 75 Old South Road. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Next item, number seven, 236 Commerce Drive, map 80, parcel 666. Petition of Tokay Properties LLC, Kara Feller Corporation for a variance of zoning regulation section 21.9 to reduce street line setback from 20 feet currently 0.9 feet proposing one foot. Permission to construct a one-story addition premises D-zone. I think the architect, Mr. Emery, are you presenting this?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Jose Emery with Arti, Antinocci and Social Architects out of Connecticut and we're representing the tenant, Peppi's Pizza. The request that you have in front of you is, as you previously stated, is for a setback, a variance where there's a small discrepancy on the agenda on your board, but it was not on the application. The small discrepancy is that the existing street setback is of 1.3 feet and we're going to end up at one foot setback. Currently, the required setback is 25 feet and we have a noncompliant, existing noncompliant setback. The request for this or the scope of this project is pretty much adding a second oven and expanding the kitchen area to meet the demand of the current situation with the COVID and the takeout requests. They had been fortunate enough as a restaurant business that their business has increased on the takeout and hence the need for that second oven on the back of the existing property.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Emery. Is there any questions for Mr. Emery? All right. Have you no questions or anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against this particular Hearing no one? Close the hearing on 236 Commerce Drive. Mr. Emery will be taking that up shortly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Number eight, 100 Carlin Drive, map 138, parcel 75. Petition of Tony and Harry Sukaneles, sorry if I mispronounced it, for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce the rear line setback from 30 feet currently 34.71 feet proposing 21.5 feet and section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage from 20% currently 19.95% proposing 21.5%. Permission to construct a deck with stairs premises A-zone. And I think Mr. Bernstein is presenting this?
Yes, how you doing? My name's Rich Bernstein and I am the agent for Harry and Tony Sukaneles and with any luck the contractor if you guys approve this. So they have a conforming lot, but because it's a corner lot, what I would say is the side yard becomes the rear yard. So that's where we're getting handcuffed with the setback. And of course, this was a spec house, so they maximized square footage for the house and did not give much thought to outdoor space. Harry and Tony are in their mid to late 70s and for Tony, it's very difficult to negotiate over uneven surfaces. So coming down out of her back porch onto some brick over the grass down to the blue stone at the fire, outdoor fireplace is becoming increasingly more difficult for her. So by building this deck, we're going to put a, cut a door into where there's a window and then they can sit on their deck or if they so desire, the stairs will then land right on the outdoor patio where their fire pit is. Tony has gone to all the neighbors that answered and I believe they all signed, signed off. You guys have that. But essentially, that's what we're doing in a nutshell.
All right, thank you, sir. As a board, have any questions for Mr. Bernstein? All right, hearing no questions or anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against this particular application 100 Carlin Drive? Hearing no one? Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. We'll be taking this up very shortly.
Thank you.
Next item, number nine, 50. Number 9, 54 Catamount Road, map 217, parcel 19. Uh, petition of Adina Kavachi, uh, for variance of the zoning regulations section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line setback and side setback from 60 feet and 30 feet currently 35.8 feet and 12.2 feet proposing 35.8 feet and 12.2 feet and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage and total floor area, uh, from 10% and 15%, currently 17.5% and 21.81% proposing 19.55% and 30.11% permission to remove roof, build new two-story addition to a second floor premises AAA zone. And I think this is the owner, Kavachi's here presenting this. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Adina Kavachi from Catamount Road. Um, so we are proposing to extend the fronts and the back of the house as well as remove the roof and, um, this built a new two-story addition for the second floor. Um, I spoke into our surrounding neighbors and they signed off and approved, um, on the changes that we would like to, um, have on the house. And we've also sent out the letters to all the surrounding houses, so I think there's about 15 homes. Um, I also have my architect, John Malazian, so for any questions.
Thank you, Miss Kavachi. Uh, the board have any questions? Okay. Hearing no questions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, 54 Catamount Road? Thank you, Ms. Kavachi. Uh, that closes the hearing on 54 Catamount Road. Okay, um, does, does the board need a break? Okay, I didn't think so. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing and reconvene our working session, executive session. Uh, and, uh, let me see what the order is. I'm looking at you on the screen. Okay, I have the order of voting. Uh, so, uh, go through the docket again, continued docket, number 14 and 15 on the continued docket. We're both withdrawn. A general docket, the first item we have is 831 Black Rock Turnpike. Uh, Mr. Mills, uh, presented this and it's to, uh, first floor, a commercial space, turn it, put it into, converted into, uh, dwelling units. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, is there any discussion?
Seemed like a reasonable ask and they have the parking that they need, so the reduction of traffic can't be complained about.
I wish we could ask for more affordable housing, but that's not part of this application. That would help the whole town.
It would, but, um, I, I think it's probably gonna be affordable, 900 square feet and, uh,
Right, but the, you know, official affordable.
Yeah, true, but, um, it's, it's a very reasonable request.
Yes.
Okay, bring it to a vote. This is the order and we'll follow it for the rest of the hearing. Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that passes. Number 2. 58 Judge Street, uh, petition to Welterix. Uh, Eric presented this. Uh, it's to remove and rebuild an existing screen porch. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Terry, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion?
Reasonable request.
Yeah, I mean, they have 90, 9375 is required. They only have 6,000 square feet. It's a lot of houses like that in that area that
Right.
face this problem. Uh, alright, bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that passes. Number 3, 66 Smith Street. Uh, petition to the Mateos, Ms. Mateo presented her application to construct a rear, uh, two-story second floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Seemed reasonable.
Um, 46.5 for an FAR is, you know, more than I wish it was, but I understand that the lot is too small.
Yeah, it's the same one with the construction right next to it?
Yeah. I mean, the purpose of an FAR limit is to prevent houses from looking too bulky for the property. That's, that's the reason for them.
Yeah, you have 9375 and a, a 4977 is what they have.
Yeah.
A lot of people on those, those side streets have all been, it's pretty consistent with the neighborhood, though.
No, I agree, but it's unfortunate.
The building immediately next to it looks like it's bigger than what they're proposing, so.
It might have a bigger lot. Alright, uh, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number 4, that was continued. Uh, number 5. Uh, 462 Lally Boulevard, it's, uh, for Hell's Peak Road LLC. Attorney Ambrose presented the application uh, to add to, uh, a mechanical stand so they can, uh, put a standalone generator. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Uh, Brian was at his, uh, hand over his mouth. Um, I knew that there'd be someone else that could, uh, move on that one. Uh, let's bring it to a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't afford a discussion, but I was just had a feeling.
We got, we got a chance to set a speed record here.
No, never.
No, not even close.
Number 6, 75 Old South Road. Uh, petition of Haley, Christopher Milligan, uh, Tanner White presented the application. That's, uh, the rebuilding, uh, tear down and rebuild a new, new structure. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Alright, discussion?
You can have the next one.
Remember, this is, uh, previously approved for some renovations, 16.5%. Um, and, uh, now it's at 15.9, you know, uh, lower than they currently are at. Um, I mean.
It's a no-brainer.
You got two hardships that they have established on this one. Brian?
Yeah, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
I vote yes. Where am I? There I am. That passes. Number 7, uh, 236 Commerce Drive, uh, petition of, uh, Tokay Properties. Uh, Mr. Emery, uh, presented this. Uh, it's for, uh, Peppi's. Uh, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Thank you, Katie. Alright, uh, discussion?
Um, I think, I think I want to underscore the fact the hardship is due to the location of the existing building and the, not that they need, you know, the hardship is not because we need more pizza as much as we like pizza, but it has to, you know, it has to do with the building where it is on the site.
I, I, I think in the interest of reducing traffic in terms of turning over customers, it's reasonable.
Are we talking about branches?
Yes.
Uh,
We're, we're talking about, uh, actually, uh, four and a half inches. It's a third of a foot.
A third of a foot, yeah.
No, the seat setback is 25 feet.
But they're currently at 1.3 feet.
Right, I'm just saying, yeah, it's no different than what they have, but I just want to make sure. Yeah.
We're not asking them to tear anything down, so.
No.
No, but, uh, but Jane's point is that, uh, the hardship's not, we need more Peppi's Pizza. The hardship is that the location of the building
Right.
uh, is constraining.
Yes.
I love pizza. I love Peppi's Pizza.
Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number 8, um, 100 Carlin Drive. Uh, petition of the, the Kavachis. Uh, Mr. Bernstein presented this. It's to construct a rear deck and stairs. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Terry, thank you. Uh, discussion?
Perfectly reasonable. I don't think it's unattractive and I think it serves its purpose well.
Again, I think the hardship is that it's on a corner, you know. So I have a lot of empathy for the people who live there, but hardship is not uh, a personal need. It has to do with the building.
Yeah, the, uh, they, 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 they had maxed out and
Yeah.
on, on everything and you, and you don't really have a spot to put it on a corner lot. It strains the setbacks, uh, but, alright, bring to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That passes. Number 9, uh, 54 Catamount Road. Petition of the Kavachis, Mr. Kavachi presented the, uh, application. It's to, uh, remove roof, build, uh, two-story, new two-story second floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry. Second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, um, let's, uh, discuss. Extremely small lot, um, and, uh, they're, they're, they're coming, uh, very close to what they're required. I mean, they're, uh, supposedly have 87,000 square feet and they have 12,600 square feet. Uh, so, uh, they, they did a nice job trying to design this and, uh, and fit it in, so I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, and it looks like it's dormered out. They're just gonna basically box it out to a colonial, right?
Alright, bring to a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That passes. Uh, thank you. This was our fastest, uh, pandemic, uh, hearing, uh, by at least, uh, at least an hour and a half to two hours.
At least.
When do you think, when, do you think we're gonna be able to meet in person again or never? Because this is fine.
Probably June or July.
Oh, yeah?
Sign up for your vaccination and then we'll be there.
I'm getting mine tomorrow, my first one.
I already got my first shot.
You did?
I'm gonna have to wait a long time.
Mine's coming.
Yep.
Is there a virus or something? Not funny, Keegan.
You gotta get out of the basement, Terry.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright.
See everyone next month.
Stay safe, bye everybody.
Thanks, Josephine. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.